All right, the fourth meeting of the night. This is the committee, the whole meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll? Phyllis, if you're trying to call the roll, you're muted.
She's unmuted. I think she's just getting her papers together.
Thank you.
It's a lot of books to move around. Okay, Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes, here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from previous meetings for June 1st, 2020. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Brown. Any discussion?
I wanted to know if Wendy could let us know if she has all of the emails from Wednesday and Monday for that, and how exactly they were going to get put up after we approved the minutes.
So the minutes were incorporated in there from the first and the third only. The ones from the eighth and the 10th, those will be, they would get approved on the next city council meeting.
I meant the first and the third. I'm sorry, Wendy. I meant the first and the third.
Yes, those are already incorporated in your minutes. If you looked at it, you had over 110 pages on there, and that is because you have all the emails incorporated onto those minutes, and they will be posted on the website.
Jared, you're still, you're muted again.
Just wanted to make sure we had, we had all of those in there.
All right, any, any discussion? No? Do we have to do a roll call, Wendy or Phyllis?
I think so, yes.
All right, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes. All right, are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I had one. It's, it would be an ordinance amending the liquor code. It would be to change a license, a liquor license, from one classification to the other.
But would that be under number eight?
It would be number eight, yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion in order to add that to the agenda? I believe we do.
I'll make the motion.
I'm sorry, Phyllis?
Okay, you just need to make a voice vote on that to add to the agenda.
I thought we had to do everything by, by roll call.
Yes.
I don't think you need to do that by roll call. That's just adding an item to the agenda.
Okay, well, um, oh, Jim wants to say something. Jim?
Due to the recent amendment to the Open Meetings Act that went into effect on Friday afternoon, I believe it was, the language to the new seven perennial E. Section of the Open Meetings Act provides that without distinction, any and every vote must be a roll call vote, as long as there is a declaration of emergency or disaster declaration, or still operating under a disaster declaration, as loose as it may currently be. So yes, you need a roll call vote for everything, including all the things moving on to city council, or for that matter, with or without recommendation.
Okay, so Dennis, were you going to make a motion to include that in the agenda?
I did.
Thank you. Is anybody seconded?
I seconded.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Sharice. Phyllis, would you like to do the roll call?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
You want to vote on this one, Mayor? I guess not, okay.
Okay, all right, so that item is added to the agenda, sorry, the agenda underneath the resolution, the two resolutions on the agenda. So the next item is public input and presentations. I'm going to start with public input via Zoom, and then I'll double check with Diane. There's two emails that I saw come in before 7:00. I just want to make sure that they were not supposed to be read, or if they've already been read. So we'll go to the public. So the first person here is Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. Let's see here. Jason, are you supposed to unmute them, or am I supposed to unmute them?
They should be unmuted now. Dr. Underwood?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Yes, um, I did not get an opportunity to email, and there's, there is so much going on, but I have been speaking through my organizations, and yes, I am concerned about what's going on. And I appreciate all the people who are working through their organization and speaking out what I want to do, and it seems so unimportant probably, but it is important to my community to say that we're still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision, and I would like that to still be a part of the record. And I hate to even talk about it with so many important things going on, with people dying and all. But I'm sure that people know that I care, and I am concerned, and I am speaking through my many organizations and, and through their marches and all, but I still must say that we are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision, a sewer problem, and I need to really get that in. So that's what I'm going to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next person is Christopher. You have three minutes. I'm sorry, I should have said that earlier, Evelyn.
Hello, Christopher Hansen from Urbana, Illinois. I am wondering, last week, I think we heard from Mary Ellis Wu, say something about, you know, let's have some, about police reform, and let's have that every week at every.
Chris, I'm sorry, you're breaking up. It's hard to hear you.
So today, people about police reform, and can you hear me now? Better?
A little better, yes.
Okay, I'll just try to speak slower and louder. What I was trying to say was, last week, we heard from Mary Ellis Wu that she would like to hear city council talk about something concrete every week at every city council meeting about police reform or CPRB reform. And this week, we had another day where we had tons of public input, with a lot of, a lot of input from the public, and we didn't hear the council say anything as far as, I didn't hear anyone say anything about the issue. So I'm just here to remind you that, you know, many of you have talked about having a dialogue, and it is not at all clear to the public how we're supposed to have that dialogue. It seems very one-sided. So we're, we're waiting to hear from you. We're waiting for that leadership, and, and we're not seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish, oh, let's see here, there is an Alan. You should be unmuted in a moment.
Yes, thank you. So the main thing that I wanted to comment about was that one point in the past from city council has been that they don't have authority when it comes to dropping charges against Aleah Lewis. However, one of the points that has been brought up, and that I am reiterating, is that you can recommend that the charges be dropped. That is well within your authority. In fact, you don't even have to wait for a majority on the city council to do so. Each and every one of you can make a statement, a public statement for people to cite, saying that you believe that the city of Urbana should be recommending that the state's attorney drops charges against Aleah Lewis. We've seen a lot of different tone deaf actions from the city as an entity recently, including putting photos of Police Chief Seraphin, excuse me, one singular photo, prominently on the most recent newsletter as a celebration of the protests, yet those very same protests were calling for his non-reappointment. So the main thing here is, we're waiting for what statements and non-statements you are making each and every week. This has been going on for two months now. There is nothing stopping you from saying that you, individually or otherwise, believe that charges should be dropped against Aleah Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that is all of the people who are in attendance right now. Diane, I was trying to keep track of the names of the people who sent in public comment for today, and I had an Aiden Watson Morris that emailed before 7:00 PM. I don't know if you were able to read that one.
Let me check. No, I didn't read that one.
Okay, and then the other one is Alana Ackerman.
I believe.
Yes, you read that, Mayor.
I did read that one.
Okay, so the only one that was emailed before 7:00 PM then is Aiden Watson Morris. My name is Aiden Watson Morris, and I'm a graduate student at UIUC. I'm emailing to call on the Urbana City Council to meaningfully oppose police brutality in the Urbana community. I stand with community members calling on the city council to address police brutality in light of recent emails, sorry, recent events at both the national and the local scale. I support calls for the charges against Aleah Lewis to be dropped, and an independent investigation of her arrest by the Urbana police to be conducted, with the officers who assaulted Ms. Lewis put on leave pending the results of the investigation. Additionally, I share concerns about the civilian police review board and support the calls for substantial reform that would make this board a more meaningful oversight. The Urbana City Council must address the serious concerns of its community members, community regarding the Urbana police. Thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is, do we have presentations tonight? Do we have one?
Could I just put one thing in there that, I was sharing a photo, since we're again not in council chambers, and about 50 people gathered outside the city building this evening, who were holding a very large sign that said, "End white silence," and it's something we might have seen if we were coming in. They, I don't know if they're still out there now, but they were there from at least about 6:30 until about 9:00 o'clock, that I'm aware of. They may, some of them may still be out there, but we're not seeing that, but I just wanted to put that into public input, that we do have folks who are demonstrating in front of the city building tonight, as they have for now two weeks in a row.
All right, thank you. So presentations, Dennis, did you want to say something?
Sure. I think that it would be fair to say that the city council members are actively working on preparing the first opportunity for a public dialogue, and that an announcement about that will be happening in the near future.
Thank you. Presentations, do we have any presentations tonight?
We do have a presentation. This is Carol, this is Carol Mitten. I believe Chuck is going to make a brief presentation to give you a little bit more background, Chuck Los, Chief Los, sorry, give you a little bit more background on the deputy fire chief position that we are proposing to fund in the budget.
Okay, so I'm going to try to share the screen here real quick. All right, just did that.
No, unfortunately, we can't see anything.
Oh, wow.
Starting, yep, something's starting. There we go.
Okay. So, Mayor, council staff, and guests, thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to share this with you tonight. I appreciate the, the chance we have to, to bring this forward to you. This has to do with our deputy fire chief position. And. Hold on here. There we go. Okay, first, the need for a deputy fire chief. Again, this, assume the position of the fire chief in his or her absence. So this position would step up and, and take the fire chief's position when the fire chief is out of town for any reason. This position would address the SOGs, the policies, and procedures of the department, would be a, create a consistent training officer's position, which we have not had that, that consistency on a 40-hour position in a very, very long time. Would lead the emergency medical program in updating the, the training for emergency medical training for our firefighters, so that we can maintain the intermediate status that we have committed to our community. To manage the administration of the fire department, while the deputy chief would focus on the operations, day-to-day processes of the fire department. It evenly distributes the current workload by the administration's staff, again, that, that division of labor, helping to make things more efficient on the day-to-day processes. Why now? The organization is flat and unsuccessful in its current structure. When I started here about 18 months ago, one of the things that I did mention was that the, the organization, as the chart shows, is a very flat organization, and the, the leadership administration side of things is very limited on the 40-hour side of being able to carry out those, those day-to-days. There's been really no structural change in this fire department, in the Urbana Fire Department, for the past 20 years. Approximately 20 years ago, a little over 20 years ago, the department had some transition when Champagne Fire and Urbana Fire absorbed the University of Illinois Fire Department. That was the last big change that was, that happened in the Urbana Fire Department, and it has not changed since then. The administrative workload has exceeded beyond what the administration staff can successfully manage at this point right now. There, there is so much stuff going on, and we continue to absorb programs that we are, cannot successfully maintain with the, the administrative staff that we have currently. We're working to build a solid succession plan. We would like to promote our next leadership from within our department. That is our focus, is to, to train and maintain our leadership staff so that they can be promoted up through the organization. And then, again, develop that strong leadership organization, so that we have those strong leaders that can step up. This is the proposed organizational chart that we're looking at at this point. The addition to that is adding the deputy chief between the chief and the division chiefs. The difference with this from what we currently have is that deputy chief position is not inserted there. The deputy chief, again, will serve as number two in command. Will have that ability to step into the fire chief's position in the chief's absence. Right now, I rolled one week over from last year, have all of my vacation right now because it's just difficult to get out of town and to use that vacation time because there's so much stuff going on. This would help the fire chief, whether it's myself or whoever, moving forward, to be able to get that break, to go to training, to go to, out of town for whatever reasons. The responsibilities on, for this position include service fire chief in absence of the fire chief, supervise the division chiefs, setting goals, doing evaluations, and again, putting those expectations out there, so that the division chiefs, again, will grow and, and be part of that, solid part of that succession plan. They'll oversee the annual review of department guidelines and policies and procedures. This is something that has not, our SOGs have not been reviewed for the past five years. We really need to get after some of this stuff and, and start to define and redefine our, our guidelines and our, our policies and procedures. They're going to, this person will supervise programs, the training program, health and safety program, the advanced emergency medical technician program, and the emergency management. They'll be a part of supervision of, or leading those, those programs. They'll be the coordinator for the special operations, setting up the training, setting up deployments for hazardous materials team and the technical rescue team, and any other duties that are assigned to support not only the fire chief, but the Urbana Fire Department. The value of the, the deputy fire chief, it provides depth. And again, we're, we're looking at that depth to be able to, to create efficiency and effectiveness from our leadership team, building a strong foundation for future, future growth. And again, I cannot emphasize enough that succession plan that we want to put in place so that we can start to build our leadership from within and, and to promote from within. Distributes the administrative workload, that, that, that divisional labor, that being able to, to delegate and to build and, and counsel our, our younger leaders so that they can be strong leaders in the future. Consistent department training program, which is extremely important. Right now, our training officer is one of our division chiefs. Our division chiefs work a 24/48 shift, and the training officer is, sees one shift at a time. For them to see the other two shifts, we have to fill in positions so that they can, they can work the next two days. It improves the organizational safety profile by making sure that they are a safety officer on the emergency scene, training opportunities, and at a small part, they're going to reduce some overtime costs when I would have to hire back a, a person to backfill if I go out of town for any reason. Some of the costs, position does create one-half FTE, and that half FTE would be a fire inspector to backfill the elimination of our fire marshal's position. The creation of a deputy chief will come from our fire marshal's position when the fire marshal decides to retire in September of this year. The net recurring cost on this is going to be approximately about $72,000 annually. The, the other thing that I put on here, the focus of public education program will be reduced with the reduction of the fire marshal position. Kind of a quick run-through. Do we have any questions that I can help answer?
You're muted, Mary Ellis.
I thought I undid it. Thank you. Are there any questions for the chief? Eric?
So, is the $72,000 incremental cost, that's anticipated to kick in if we create this position, not in fiscal year 20, not in the fiscal year looming, but the fiscal year after that, or when, when would that start?
This would start, we're anticipating this is going to start October 1 in the budget 2021. So it will be this October 1. The fire marshal retires September 4 of this year. We're anticipating that the promotional processes will, will take effect, so that we are hoping to be able to, to put somebody in place October 1 of this year.
If I can ask a follow-up, how common is it for fire departments approximately our size to have a deputy chief?
Thank you for asking that, because that was one of the things I did want to mention back here on the, the org chart. This is, this is really consistent to what all other fire departments look like. There is a redundancy or a backfill, if you will, so that the fire chief is, has got a, an assistant, whether it's deputy chief, assistant chief, whatever that, that, that verbiage is that they use. It's also consistent from within our own organization. Our police department looks very similar to this. They have that number two in command. So this, this org chart that, that is showing right here is consistent across the fire service, also consistent internally with our comparable internally.
And is it also quite common that when a fire chief retires or leaves, that the deputy becomes the interim chief while a permanent one is looked for?
Yeah, and that's, that is generally what, what happens, is the, the number two in command becomes interim, and, and many times, because of a succession plan, because of building your leadership, that number two person becomes your number one person, again, from being able to promote from within.
Yeah. Promoting from within is, I mean, this is going to cost a bit each year, but promoting from within is generally a lot cheaper than doing national searches.
Generally, yes.
All right, Dennis, did you have a question?
Well, I don't know, as I remember, we did actually create a new level of promotion within the department about six years ago when we created the lieutenant positions, but I'm not really sure that I'm remembering this, remembering this correctly, but I remember we had a discussion about that, and I think that's how the lieutenants were created, to allow promotion from within the department and personal growth. Of course, I don't think Chief Los would remember that because he wasn't here.
No, I would not.
It's fine, though. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, does anybody else have any questions for the chief? So I, I guess I get to ask my own questions. I have one about, you mentioned that the public education would be decreased. I'm wondering if you could speak to what that entails?
Sure. Right now, our, our fire marshal is into the, to the Urbana school districts, schools very regularly. By reducing the fire marshal's position from a full-time to a part-time, we have to look at things that we're going to slim down. I mean, things that we're not going to be able to do because of that. So we have to look at our priorities. Our priorities are, are fire prevention permits, making sure that, that those are completed, code enforcement, plan reviews, working with community development department, and doing some of the, the plan reviews to, to assist with that. So we, we had to look at things that we were going to, how we're going to restructure this a little bit with that part-time person, and, and this was one of the things that we scaled back back from that fire inspector doing any of that.
So primarily, the work that the current fire marshal does when he goes into the schools to talk about safety and how to, how to act and stop drop and roll that we normally hear, is that correct? And then, I think that there is a, there is a week, a fire safety week at, it used to be at Lincoln Square, I don't know if that's still there, but are there plans to cut that as well?
No, you know, our fire prevention week is something that nationwide is always supported, and we'll continue to put some of our firefighters that are working 24/48 shifts, we'll put them on that project so that we don't lose fire prevention week. It may not look like it has in the past, but, you know, we have talked since I've been here, that maybe we revitalize our fire prevention week to make it look a little bit different, and change it up a little bit so that the kids are going to see some new things in the upcoming years. So, fire prevention week is something that we are, we still are champions of.
Okay, all right. There's no further questions for the chief at this time? I don't see anybody raising their hands at me. Okay, it is 10:25, and we still have all of the staff reports and the resolutions. Thank you, chief, I'm sorry, thank you for your, for your presentation, I appreciate it.
You bet, thanks for the opportunity.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting by 30 minutes to 11 o'clock.
I'll second that then.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to extend the meeting until 11 o'clock. Is there any discussion? So I guess my, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, Jared, would you take the chair first? No, sorry, Eric. Eric, would you take the chair for a moment?
I'm happy to, yes.
Thank you.
And Mary Alice, I'd be happy to recognize you.
Thank you. So I'm curious, we've got the capital improvement plan, we have the collective bargaining agreement, are there other staff reports? I'm trying to ascertain whether or not we can get through it in 30 minutes.
Nothing, there's nothing else except the ordinance that the mayor mentioned about amending the, that one liquor license.
Okay, all right, thank you. Eric, I'll take the chair back if that's okay with you.
Mary Alice, I'd be happy to give you the chair.
Thank you. All right, so that motion was made by Jared, and who seconded that motion?
I made the motion, Dennis Roberts.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis made the motion. Okay, will a clerk please call, call the vote?
Sorry, Phyllis, let me unmute you here, and now you can.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes. All right, onward, so staff reports. Carol, do you have a staff report? You don't have a staff report?
I do not.
Okay. Does anybody else have a staff report tonight? I don't see any. Onto resolution number 2020-06-029R, resolution approving the capital improvement plan from the executive office.
So, Will Kolchowski is here with me, and we are not gonna walk through all the spreadsheets, I'm gonna share some sort of high-level overview thoughts that I want folks to have in their minds as they think about the CIP, and then we are prepared to answer questions, and Will is prepared to bring up any spreadsheets that you want to talk about. I wanted to emphasize that, you know, we've been doing these long-term studies, and the CIP reflects what we have so far, and it will continue to reflect that, so you see the full impact of the facilities master plan in the CIP that we proposed, and then we will continue as we finalize the stormwater master plan, and we're, we have some of the information on the pavement condition index, but we haven't been able to fully integrate that, but you will see that going forward, that we're building on these studies that have, that have told us the status of our infrastructure. In the coming year, particularly on the transportation side, we're prioritizing studies and design development so that we can be ready for external funding opportunities. I want folks to understand and remember that the CR&amp;I fund is the only source of funding for facilities unless there is grant money available, but these funds that have recurring revenues are not available for facilities, so that puts a lot of pressure on that fund, and the CR&amp;I fund is replenished using general fund dollars. There is no way to pay for the implementation of the facilities master plan without borrowing. So you'll see in the CIP that we have, that we have built into the projections $10 million bond issuance in calendar year 2022, which would bridge two fiscal years. That is for planning purposes at this point, because we still have to, you know, figure out what our financial position is, but we just all have to recognize and get comfortable with the fact that the facilities master plan can't be implemented without borrowing. And so I also want to share that there will continue to be pressure, not only on the CR&amp;I fund, but on the motor fuel tax, as we think about funding more streetlight installations or conversions to LEDs, and then, as we gave you a little preview two weeks ago, we will be coming to you next year with a more fully fleshed-out plan to upgrade our traffic signal equipment, and so that can be paid out of motor fuel tax or CR&amp;I, but that's yet another draw on those funds. So, just want to emphasize how important getting comfortable with borrowing will be. What you really need to focus on in terms of passing this ordinance that's before you is FY '21. This is not a commitment to the future years, this is us looking forward and trying to give some sense of how we see things playing out, just like we'll have to revisit the budget, the operating budget later this year when we have a better sense of the impact of the pandemic, we will be revisiting the CIP, and we'll be revisiting the CIP again next year as well. And we haven't factored in any grant money that we're not certain of getting, so that will be all to the good if we're able to compete effectively for grants. And I do want to mention, even though this is not something that the city is going to manage, but we're fairly certain of getting the SPR grant, the statewide planning and research grant, to do the initial study work for Florida Avenue between Lincoln and Vine, and that will be managed by the regional plan commission. So, with that, I would entertain any questions that you have, and as I said, Will is here with me, and we have Justin and Vince standing by if you have any questions about projects or so forth. We can, we can bring up spreadsheets or whatever you'd like to talk about.
Thank you. Questions for Carol or other staff? Bill Brown?
Yeah, just on the, in the project book where you have associated master plan, it seems like bike master plan and pedestrian master plan are listed pretty often, is that just because, like, say pedestrian master plan indicated there were some ramps that needed to be fixed on Fairlon Drive, or are there, I don't even remember if that's a bike route? How did, how did you decide whether to use, how to, whether to put those in the associated master plan?
You want to take that one? Will's gonna answer that question.
Will's gonna answer, all right. Will?
All right. So that one is if the transportation project kind of addresses some component of one of the master plans, if master plan calls for something, you know, ramp work, or, you know, if the project kind of touches a component of the plan, that's how the plan gets into the project book. So it's not necessarily, you know, direct correlation, but if it kind of touches it, it gets in there.
So is that just kind of in there as a reminder when we get to the engineering of that project, to consult those plans?
Yeah, and I think it's also, you know, the project book is part of like, why are we doing it? You know, well, it's in our plans, or, you know, there's something in the plans that say, you know, that we should be doing long-term, so it's kind of also a reminder of the justification.
Okay, because some of those do have priorities already within their own plan, I don't know how closely those priorities are aligning to our capital improvement plan priorities. Did you guys look at that a lot, at all?
What I, what I would say about that is, this was, we were very focused on condition at this point, but we also, you'll note from under the other, in some of the, in some of the project pages, you'll see that one of the associated master plans is the SCIL report, which is the selected crash intersection locations, and for every one of those that's in Urbana, there is a project associated with it. So, safety has been a big factor also in setting this initial set of priorities.
Okay, that's great, and I'll just point out that we haven't actually approved the pedestrian master plan yet, I don't think that's come to council, but it will soon, I guess.
Yes, one of these days, we should have said draft, or unapproved, or something like that.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes. I'd like to ask a little bit about, when we do the upgrade in Savannah Green, we have a lot of, you call, you know, they're designated as alleys, if we rebuild the, those alleys, and are they gonna be torn out and recast or repaved?
One of the things, yeah, Savannah Green, one of the things that we hope to do is actually get some advice about what's the best approach to use in Savannah Green, given the significantly deteriorated condition of the alleys, so replacing them in kind might not be the solution. And, you know, we've talked about, about different materials that we might want to use, so we're looking for some advice from, from a consultant about what the best approach is, given how significantly deteriorated that, the roads in Savannah Green and the alleys in Savannah Green are in particular, but also being mindful of the fact that we have this same looming problem in multiple subdivisions that we need to address.
Yeah, so, I was wondering that if, of course, I guess we don't really know exactly how we're going to reconstruct the alleyways, but if they were to be, if the current cement, as I recall, their cement pavement cracked and pretty badly damaged, if they were to be removed and new cement was laid down, would it be, would we reconsider them to be now streets if they were resurfaced completely from the ground up, or would they, were you imagining that there would be a different substance like macadam or some other substance that would replace the current surfaces?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's highly likely, and if Justin wants to jump in here and, while I'm playing engineer, and I think I know enough to answer this question correctly, that it's unlikely that it's going to be a concrete surface.
Okay, so, so I was thinking if they were gonna pour new concrete, maybe we should call them streets because they're acting as streets, they, you know, all the driveways for all the apartments are using them as if it were a street, of course, it's not maybe as wide as a street, but if we're going to be putting down gravel and macadam or some other substance that's more of a secondary manner kind of use, like a paved alley, yes, I could see that, it would also be more cost-effective, too.
Right.
All right, just curious about it, because that's quite a, quite a big project and a serious one.
No, your line of thinking is consistent with our line of thinking.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks, just curious about it.
Are there other questions for staff? All right, I have a question for staff. So, one of the things that we hear consistently is that everything kind of comes to a head at the same time, so one of the things in terms of a plan, in terms of how to move forward, is to kind of space those out, and if I saw correctly, the two smaller firehouses, and then the also larger firehouse are items that need to be replaced, and I think that the one on Lincoln and the one on Philo were kind of rated at a higher level of need. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that would it make sense to be able to spread out the rebuilding or the modifications to those so that we don't all of a sudden have our entire fire department need to be rebuilt?
So, interesting question, so in each case of Fire Station 2 and Fire Station 3, you're right, they were, they were highlighted as in being in, you know, condition that they needed to be replaced in the near term. In each case, our intention is to build a new fire station and keep the existing fire station in service until a full changeover can happen, so we won't be down a fire station at any point. The other piece of it is that in talking to Elizabeth about timing of projects and stuff, she, originally, we thought, let's, let's just even it out over, over time, so that, so that we're not having any big spikes in the amount of money that we're spending, but she advised, given that we do need to borrow money, that the best thing to do is to borrow money in one bond issuance and then spend that money. So that's why you see kind of it chunking the way that it does. I hope that is responsive to your question.
Yes, it is, it is, thank you. Are there any other questions or staff, Dennis?
And in relation to what you just said, Carol, is it likely that you will have an architect design both fire stations to be identical and use the same floor plan?
I think that's, I think that's possible.
All right, just wondering. That would save money as far as designing goes, if you came up with a really nice plan that was, fit the, fit the lots that they're built on and the staffing requirements, it would, you know, just, we'd want to have a fire department that looks good, but it would be nice to save money and have them, if they're gonna build them at the same year or within a year of each other, you could save money with the planning.
Sure, and then people won't be fighting over which station they're, they're working out of, they'll just be the same.
Fairness in every respect.
All right, I do not see any other questions, then I have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'm gonna move, hold on, pull that, Jen, back up, resolution number 2020-06-029R, resolution approving the capital improvement plan, be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, would the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
And you are afraid, so it makes you... Hershey?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. That, that goes on to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Just for the record, there was a background noise, and I don't, I don't know that I ever heard my name, and I'm a yes as well.
Thank you, Dennis.
As am I, Dennis Roberts.
Yeah.
All right, do you have a full accounting, Phyllis, of everybody who voted?
I do.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Okay, you're on.
Phyllis' phone died.
All right, onward to resolution number 2020-06-030R, resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with International Association of Firefighters Local 1147. Is this gonna be Elizabeth?
Yes, so I can make this fairly quick, I do want to recognize Steve Doggett, who is virtually in the room with us, and now we can see him, who is the president of our IAFF local and was a big part of getting this contract done. So, just, just a few things to point out for those who have not had time to review the memo, so this contract... Um, so this contract wa- is a two-year contract with IAFF. It would provide across-the-board wage increases of one and a half percent for each of the two years. Um, there are some modest adjustments to the longevity schedule between years 18 and 25 and that's just to kind of help us keep pace with comparable communities. Um, that's important to us in terms of recruitment and retention. Um, there are some additional increases in the second year of 1% for engineers, lieutenants and captains and that addresses a wage compression issue. Um, and that's, those are really the most significant, um, items in the agreement, but I'm happy to answer questions and I'm sure Steve would be willing to also.
Are there any questions for either Elizabeth or Steve? All right, I don't see any. Uh, Sharice, you're, you don't have your video on, so if you want to say something, you'd have to unmute yourself. No, okay.
So I would make a resi- I would make a motion.
Uh, Diane?
The mayor wants to speak.
Diane?
Just wanted to give a thank you to both the, um, unions bargaining team and the city management's bargaining team. As we, as we noted earlier, um, this contract was done, um, I think in four bargaining sessions. Both sides came prepared, both sides were trained. And, um, I truly appreciate the very productive, um, way in this, in which this was, was concluded. And, um, just for the public's, uh, knowledge, in years past, we hired outside, uh, council, outside legal team to do these negotiations and sometimes it could be very combative and drawn out and expensive. So when we brought this in-house, it really has changed the tone, um, and the, uh, the ability to get these done. So I appreciate the hard work on both sides.
Thank you. Dennis, were you wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, we, we've learned that, uh, good diligence, due diligence was done on both, both, uh, the, uh, the union representatives for the fire department and staff and we appreciate the harmony and the hard work. And therefore I'd like to, uh, move resolution 2020-06-030R, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1147 for a term of July 2020 through June 30th, uh, 2022, forward to the city council with approval.
Second. Moved by Dennis, uh, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. Kay, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. All right, that moves forward to city council with approval. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate it. Uh, the last item on our agenda is a liquor license. I don't have it up on me right now. Diane, if, uh, you're going to present this, could you read out the, the number, the ordinance number?
This is ordinance number 2020-06-034 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Section Three dash 43. It's increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Mama Tried LLC doing business as the Rose Bowl Tavern, 106 North Race Street, Urbana. Um, as you, as you may recall, a number of weeks ago, the Rose Bowl, uh, requested that they change their liquor license classification, um, from, uh, uh, Class C or Class A to a Class C, no, I'm sorry, Class C to Class A. And, um, and that was during the pandemic and allowed them to, um, I'm sorry, Class A. They were Class A, which is a bar. They changed to Class C, which is a packaged liquor store. They've operated as a packaged liquor store for the past few weeks. Now they want to switch back to Class A in anticipation of moving into phase four and reopening as a bar. So this would increase the number of class, and I need to correct the, um, title of this ordinance. It would increase the number of Class A liquor licenses from 10 to 11 and decrease the number of Class C licenses from 23 to 22. So they're going back to what they were previously.
All right, questions for Diane? All right, can I have a motion?
I move approval of the, uh, ordinance as presented, uh, be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, uh, Sharice?
Yeah, is this gonna, are they going to have to pay again to get a different liquor license? Or will they be able to operate based on the fact that they're just going back to what they used to have?
We've waived the fee.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Colbrook?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes, and I can't wait to go back.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. All right, that motion goes on to, sorry, that ordinance goes on to city council with recommendation for approval for next week with no further business before this committee. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.